Is there a Pat O'Connor here?
I cannot top the speaker's eloquence and commend Jennifer's in-depth research and statistics of the facts. Interestingly, she said, "It impacts people." And how it impacts me, although not in the area, is I found it racist to have demolished the little house of Monroe's, and I consider that racist because Marilyn Monroe's mother was Mexican. As for Shirley asking where have all the people been going who are displaced by this development? Well, they're going under the Fifth Street Bridge with their tents in a new community called Homeless. And as for the audience worried about parking your cars, well, the Bus Riders Union, under the auspices of the Labor Strategy Committee, is taking care of that problem by working closely with City Hall officials to make Los Angeles a car-free area. So the people who are losing their homes now will also eventually lose their cars, which ironically enough is a home for many. And that's the real scoop, folks.
Okay, I have some speaker cards by the applicant and its representative, Rebecca Dool.
Good evening, President Cochran and members of the Commission. My name is Elisa Pastor, and I am here on behalf of the applicant.
It says Rebecca Dool not speaking.
So I put in cards Rebecca Dool represents the owner.
Yes.
And I put in the, we also put in the architect's card in case there was questions that they needed to answer. But I will speak on behalf of our team.
Very well, leave your address, please.
And if I may ask, can I have the same amount of time that the appellant did to speak?
Yes, that's five minutes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Elisa Pastor. I'm with the law firm of Glazer Weil, and my address is 102-50 Constellation Boulevard, Suite 1900 in Los Angeles. What we're talking about today is a 26-unit small lot subdivision. These are single-family homes. We've spent a lot of time on this project. We spent a lot of time with council office. We spent a lot of time with the neighborhood council. And we really believe that we have created a project that is consistent with the neighborhood, that is respectful to the neighborhood. And we actually have a packet that I want to pass out to you all that shows some of the architectural similarities between this project and between the neighborhood. So let's just back up for a second. We started with a 30-unit project.
There's too much talking going on back here. We don't have a mic, I'm sorry.
We start with the 30-unit project after meeting with the council office, after meeting with the neighborhood council. We now have a 26-unit project. We started out saving seven trees, one camphor tree. We're now saving two, both of the camphor trees. We have a 2,700-square-foot open space area on the side of the lot. And we've really worked hard, again, to make this project consistent with the neighborhood. The materials are consistent, the heights are consistent. In fact, this height is actually much lower than many of the apartment buildings in this neighborhood. This is not a single-family neighborhood. This is a neighborhood of apartment buildings and condos. They're two, three, and four stories. Many of them are larger than 30 feet high. And so we've actually done a lot to try to make this fit into the neighborhood. We've got 15-foot front yard setbacks along this street here. We have essentially front doors that are front on the neighborhood. We have landscaping. We have this area here that's 2,700 square feet of open space. We have windows that are pane windows that are similar. We have this hardy board wood that is similar. And so we're trying to very much mirror the existing neighborhood. And it's a compatible and consistent project. It meets the intent of the small light lot guidelines. The general plan housing element tells us that small lot subdivisions are a very important part of providing homeownership opportunities for less money than a typical standard large, single-family home. And that's what this is doing. This is an infill project. AB 32, Mayor Garcetti, everyone knows we have a housing shortage. This is an infill project, and it is trying to help with this.
I have a question.
One of, yes ma'am.
What is your projected cost of one of these units?
The projected cost is starting about $600,000. And the median, I looked on Zillow last night, and the median price of the single-family homes that are currently for sale is about $1 million in this area. I want to talk a little bit about parking. So there's been a lot of discussion about parking. And I just want to do a little math for you, okay? So today, there are nine units at the site, and there are nine space, there's nine legal parking spaces.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking through this packet here. Why did not we receive this in advance?
Commissioner Beatty, you actually should have received that in advance. Everything that we have submitted today are documents which are in the record. Talk about parking. So today, there are nine legal spaces for nine units. Those units range from, there's a four-bedroom unit, there's two-bedroom units, one-bedroom unit. And then if you, let's count the seven street spaces that are on Weddington in the stub of the cul-de-sac. So that gives you less than two spaces per unit.
So you're counting the public parking spaces?
Yes, I'm just, I'm just.
You're talking about the current parking situation?
I'm talking about the current parking situation. There's seven spaces on the street. There are nine legal spaces with those units. So if I give the benefit of the doubt and say, okay, those people use those seven spaces, you still have less than two spaces per unit. We are going to be providing 2.25 spaces per unit. So we're actually providing more parking than there is today. And if you don't count the spaces that are on Weddington, you've only got one space per unit. And again, we're providing 2.25 spaces per unit. So we are taking cars potentially off the street. There's a lot of discussion about compatibility, consistency with the plan. Dan talked a little bit about the purpose of the specific plan. Well, the purpose of the specific plan was to protect single-family neighborhoods. But this has never been a single-family neighborhood, or at least within the life of the plan, it has not been a single-family neighborhood. The whole block from, it's like Magnolia to, Magnolia to Burbank, from Witset to Laurel Canyon, those properties are all zoned R3. So when we talk about protecting single-family homes, we're not talking about this block. This is an R3-zoned block. Again, we could go in and build 35 apartments tomorrow. We wouldn't be here, there would be no discussion. So we are actually trying to do something that we think is more compatible with the neighborhood and which is a better design for the neighborhood. There's been a lot of talk about the Marilyn Monroe House. I just want to be very clear that the Marilyn Monroe House is not on our property. It was never on our property. So we had no part in taking that down. I want to talk a little bit about the street merger. The street merger is something that is perfectly allowed by law. Both the Subdivision Map Act and the LA Municipal Code allow for you to come in and do a subdivision and to do a street merger like we're asking for here without making any findings. So it's an incorrect statement that you have to go through this big street vacation process and you have to make all these public findings. That's not the law. And so what we're doing is following the municipal code, and we're following the Subdivision Map Act with this matter. I also want to just mention one thing in terms of, there has, you had asked about how many parking spaces in the lease. There is no lease. There's only one person who legally lives on this site, and that's Mrs. Getz, who's one of the appellants. Anyone else who claims that they live on the site, they're not tenants, they're not legal tenants. So we don't want there to be any confusion about that. There was also some question about the small lot subdivision ordinance. There is an existing small lot subdivision ordinance, and we comply with all of the provisions of that ordinance. That's, we have some discussion in the record about that. And I've been talking a little bit about the setbacks and the materials and the landscaping. And there is a new ordinance that's being looked at by the department, and that does not apply to this project. Again, we ask that you approve this project, or you approve the project and deny the appeal. I'm happy to answer any questions about the environmental and about the plan itself, but I, we've been here a long time, so I'm gonna.
All of these are detached?
No, they're all detached.
They are?
Yes, these are all detached units.
What is the, what is the space?
The distance between?
Eight inches.
Eight inches.
It's like a brownstone.
Excuse me?
It's like a brownstone.
A little bit, yeah.
Any other questions? Ms. Pastor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the last speaker card we have is from the councilman's office. Mr. Terosian?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for volunteering to be here and to serve our city. Cora Terosian, planning director for Councilman Kocorian, 200 North Spring Street, Los Angeles, California. The council office did not support the original proposal, which had 30 units. Actually, a prior proposal prior to that even had more. The council office did not support losing the two camphor trees in the, on the property. The council office requested additional open space on the property from what they had originally proposed. And the council office required the guest parking that is on the property today. Having said all that, the council office currently supports these staff recommendations fully. The site has been at Cultural Affairs Commission multiple times with no historical findings made. The council office protected the camphor trees, as I indicated. This site would have a buy right of 35 units with density bonus. It actually could go up to 48 units with 45 feet of height. And because of state law, AB 744, and its proximity to the Orange Line Station of a third of a mile, it actually would only need to provide half a parking spot per unit. So you would have 48 units, 24 parking spots on this site. And we did not feel that that would be an appropriate project for this site. And the much less dense project that we have in front of us is much more appropriate for the site because a project with 48 units and 24 parking spots would actually tremendously cause a parking problem in the community as opposed to this project, which is only 26 units and provides more parking than is allowed by code, by state law. And they would be able to do that without applying for anything but a specific plan permit compliance, and then going upstairs and getting their density bonus by right, by state law.
May I inquire?
Please.
Before tonight, did your office receive the same input that we're receiving this evening?
Yes.
In other words, what is the?
Our office has been working with the neighborhood council, the community groups, and the developer for about a year and a half on this now.
So you've heard these concerns like we have?
Correct.
All right. Now, for us, conspicuously absent from the packet we have and from many of the presentations this evening, is any from, is anything from the neighborhood council?
The neighborhood council took no position on this project. The land use committee supported it, but the neighborhood council was deadlocked and took no position on the project. I don't want to speak for the neighborhood council, but that's, that's what occurred.
Thank you very much. I have nothing, I have no questions. Do you guys?
So really quick, so, so the neighborhood, the community, the developer, your office have been working together for the past year and a half?
Correct. And that's where a lot of the change is addressed with this space right here, with the alignment of this driveway so that it aligns better with the, with the street, with the guest parking spots are all addressed. And actually, one thing that wasn't addressed is the amount of actual parking that adds on to this section here. With the removal of the, with the street, you actually get additional, you get additional street parking here beyond what the guest parking numbers are because you've gotten rid of a couple of the driveways that were taking up spaces. You've consolidated all of that into one drive aisle instead of, I believe, two street cuts and a street going through it.
So 48 units essentially by right?
48 units by specific plan permit compliance and, and an application upstairs at the building department.
Have there been discussions about what kind of relocation assistance will be provided to residents of these nine units?
I, I believe that they went through the relocation process. I, our office was not involved in that. It was the housing department and the applicants and the developer.
Does anybody on staff know that, how that works?
If I may, Kevin Jones from the LA City Department of City Planning. If these are in fact, well, if, since these are rent-stabilized units, there are provisions about relocation fees that are available under the Los Angeles Municipal Code that's administered by Housing and Community Investment. It varies from the age and the number of people that are part of a dwelling unit, and it's governed by that, which is why it's not part of this because it would be the standard that is available under the Los Angeles Municipal Code.
An existing lease or a month-to-month, it doesn't make a difference?
It wouldn't make a difference.
That's what I wanted to show you.
There is no difference. If there is an occupant there, a person has, and the applicant is required to provide or to comply with the provisions of the Los Angeles Municipal Code as administered by the Housing and Community Investment Department.
And so they'll get a payment of some type to move?
Depending on how long.
I'll just say that it needs to comply with the provisions of the Municipal Code.
I have a question. When working with them over the time of this, and the neighborhood may not believe this at this point, but the small lot is way better than an apartment house.
I believe so.
This is still really dense. These streets are tight. And did you consider trying to work this so there was even less than 26?
We did, what, well, we brought it down from the original, which I believe was somewhere around 32. I, I don't believe that there was any, any approvals that we could have done, anything that we could have done at that point to bring the number beyond, down beyond this, that any hook we had to do so, especially with the looming threat of a very profitable project of 48 units that could be done on the site.
Yeah, but he's not, he's not interested in keeping it. That's just why he's doing small lot. I mean, there's, there's that.
You can build 48 units and probably sell it in this market for a good penny, too. But again, and those could be condos, too. It doesn't have to be apartments. Those 48 units under small lot could be, sorry, under the density bonus, state density bonus lot could be condos and be sold off individually.
Did council's office consider the request that was made for an EIR?
There was a, there was an extensive MND done, and the council office took advice from the professional planners and the fact that there doesn't seem to be any deficiencies or anything that would require an EIR.
EIRs usually happen on larger projects, right?
Correct. That would have to be a, I'll defer to the.
If I may, Kevin Jones from the LA City Department of City Planning. For the purposes of the, of the Los Angeles jurisdiction, usually EIRs are required when there are, after applying, if there are impacts that remain after the application of mitigation measures, it's likely that then you would then default to an environmental impact report. And that's how it usually works. Is that correct? In this jurisdiction?
Significant impact.
Yeah, there's.
No, any impact. If there, if an impact remains after the application of mitigation measures.
Significant.
Yes.
There's significant impacts that remain after imposition of all feasible mitigation measures.
In this case, they identified mitigation measures that would work with regards to air quality, noise, and traffic. And oh, by the way, they analyzed the traffic and found that there would not be a significant impact. As such, following the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and the city's guidelines, there wouldn't be a nexus for this, for us as planners to require an EIR.
And if I may add, this project doesn't require a zone variance, zone change, general plan amendment, or density bonus. It's strictly the map, the specific plan permit compliance that, that's in front of us today, that's, and the environmental related to those.
So, so the community plan requires an environmental impact report, right?
No, the, the community, the state law requires. And I'm, I think I'm speaking out of turn, and I should leave these questions to the city attorney.
City plan requires environmental report?
No, no. There's no separate authority under city law of what CEQA would be required. It's what CEQA requires. CEQA requires environmental review. You start with an initial study. And you can find you can mitigate all your impacts to less than significant. Then you can, you can approve it with a mitigating declaration.
Any other inquiry? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I clarify one additional point? That's staff's process to review a project. Your review as a decision-maker is the fair argument standard. So if you find, based on the whole of the administrative record, including evidence submitted by appellants or others, that there is substantial evidence of a fair argument that all of the impacts are not mitigated to less than significant, that would require, that, that would require additional analysis if not an EIR. It would kick it back to staff to do additional analysis.
You want rebuttal? Come on up. Just your name and address again, please.
Jennifer Getz, 5303 Hermite Avenue, 91607.
Ms. Getz, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Commissioners, for staying late and taking. The community does appreciate you guys, you know, seriously looking at the case. I have one question for Mr. Terosian. He mentioned more than once that he's worked with, or they have worked with, community groups. We would like to know who and where they are. Because we're pretty, there's several community groups that we're active with that we haven't heard anybody. We've contacted our council members several times to try to work this out. We don't get a response from his office, ever. So I am curious. It's not meant to be a rhetorical question, and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask you to ask him or I'm directly allowed to ask him for the record, what community groups is he referring to that his office has worked with the last year and a half on this project? Because I'm not aware of any. And I'm not obviously the only person in the neighborhood working on this project and involved, but.
Well, it sounds like the neighborhood council was one of them.
Well, the neighborhood council, they're not a community group.
What are they?
They're, they're, they've proven to not be a community group. We, we went to them initially also. And they, their meetings, they won't talk about the projects outside of meetings. And then when you're at meetings, you're not allowed to discuss them. You're allowed to fill out a speaker card, talk about your project for one minute, and they don't reply back. But then they say that they can't talk to you outside of the meeting. So there's, we, it's not like we didn't try to reach out with the neighborhood council or the council office. It's not like the doors were. I am genuinely just curious what community groups. Because if there are other community groups out there that we don't know about, that know about this project that we don't know, there's ingredients that we don't know to it, we want to know. That's all. And as far as the neighborhood councils, I mean, it's probably not appropriate to discuss here or relevant, but, or a topic for another evening, maybe.
Hey, Ms. Getz, let's, let's talk about this for a second. Okay, you, you catch the drift here, okay?
I catch the drift.
Okay, so, so let's, let's go right to the, to the, to the nubiv.
You want to go?
Uh, uh, what, what's, because we're about to make the decision.
Let's go.
Okay.
Let's do it.
So, and you hear what's being said?
I do.
That basically what we got going, what we got proposed here is not only better, but could be way better than this 48-unit condo or apartment complex. What do you think about that?
I think that there are so many things on the planet that could be, and that could be different. And they're not. And I'm in the here, and I'm in the now with the current developer I'm with, whose application says $150,000 more than what they told you tonight, if you look on their application, who doesn't disclose the proper amount of parking spaces as with the community who lives there have shown you photos of 14-plus cars that are parked on our street, plus, and those are the legal ones, parking, parallel parking, and depending on the types of cars, obviously, and the size. So I've heard them disclose several false information to you.
To my question?
You're asking me what I think about it.
Are you answering that question?
Yeah.
Here we go.
Here, we went. I think.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting anything responsive, but here we go. Finish your answer.
Jesus Christ, scared the.
Didn't mean to fight you.
Oh, my God.
I think I know some of the.
No, 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 no. We're not going to do it this way.
I'm one of the appellants, by the way.
He's with me. It's, I'm, I'm trying to answer your question. I'm trying to say that when you, if, let me understand your question. How do I feel about what it could be? Is that correct?
There have been concerns about traffic and density and parking. And, and, and the mayor's, the councilman's office and us, as Commissioner Dearkey and Commissioner Mather have mentioned, about.
What it could be?
What would be, what would be less palatable development? This project or an apartment complex or a condo complex with, with a lot more units?
That's the question? They don't own all the properties, Commissioner Mather. That's the other issue. Why is the planning commission pushing through a project that they don't own all the properties? So what property rights? We sent you guys a current copy of lawsuit. We sent you guys the list pendants, the motion for a preliminary injunction on this property. We sent that to you. Lawyers sent that to you in February, February 26th of 2016. So planners have had that information and sent from several sources to ensure it was received. So I'm sorry, Ms. Mather, or Commissioner Mather, but property rights, I get what you're saying in, in a world where there's an owner and there's a property, and they have a right to something. I'm with you, I get that. That totally makes sense to me. And I hear, I believe I get your question. Do I want this or do I want, or what, if I have to choose? I just, I don't feel that my community is in a position that has to choose. Why do we have to choose? Why are we forced to choose about a hypothetical project that could be this or could be that? A develop, another applicant could purchase the property tomorrow and just be like, oh, my God, I'm gonna like preserve or restore. Like, we don't know, it doesn't matter like what it could be. I could fit like 80 more t-shirts in my closet because I have the space to. But it doesn't mean I'm gonna put them in there.
Yeah, I got, I got a real question here in terms of the process Catholic. There's a lot of papers here, and some legalese. I don't do so good, but I get through most of it. I didn't see the part where they don't own all the property. I mean, this is, this is a, being done as a proposal as opposed to an actual buy right property owner situation? I just want that clarified for me from somebody from planning, city attorney, or the council office, or the developer. Somebody say, is that true?
Well, let me give you the legal.
Because there's a lot of misinformation running around here today.
Yes, yes.
And, and there's a lot of stuff that's just outright just off the planet that's silly. But this particular item, I would like to know the answer to.
So, I mean, you are, you're hearing a lot of arguments. On this point, this is another argument that's been thrown, thrown into the mix for you. I would, I, I think what is really important is that you're hearing these items on appeal. Your authority is, is given to you by the code as to what do you, what do you look at when you get something on appeal? What do you look at is the findings. That's your decision. That's the scope of it. I could read the code sections to you. But it, it says, when you get something on appeal, what you're going to look at is are the findings meant for, what you're going to look at is are the findings met for, if it's a track map, is it the track map findings? Does the project permit compliance? Is the project permit compliance findings? And then that environmental review, you are the decision maker under CEQA on this project right now. And you have to make the call whether or not there has been, the arguments being put forward, there's been a fair, substantial evidence of a fair argument that there will be significant impacts to the project. You have to make that call. On this issue of who owns the property and whether or not that this application was properly processed because they don't have the right to apply for the entitlement, this is not a question that is before you. If the city erred in processing this application because they don't own the property, if that is an issue, which I'm not, I'm not even speaking to...
From the public record, I would like that defined.
Well, but let me finish.
But I think that's important.
But it would not be...
It may not influence how I vote, but I understand that.
And I knew, I think the applicant's representative should speak to that. But so you understand, if the city erred in that, someone could challenge that, but it would be challenging the decision of the department to process the entitlement. If there's an error there, they can challenge that, but it's not in front of you to make a decision on.
I understand that. I just wanted to be part of the record to clarify that particular...
We have the applicant.
Elisa Pastor for the applicant. My client owns a portion of the property. We own, basically, we own right now half of the property. We have the permission of the other property owner who has signed an affidavit that was submitted with the application that we have the right to submit this application for the entire property. And we are in, under contract to purchase that other piece of property.
And even though it's not before me, just to satisfy my own curiosity, why haven't they sold property to you yet?
They can. But can I say it's not...
I'm going to ask a question.
Well, just it's not uncommon, and planning maybe can speak to this, to have people get options on purchasing property. And if they don't get the entitlement, they don't follow through on the ability to...
Right, there are certain contingencies. Elisa Pastor, there are certain contingencies on the sale of the property which have not occurred yet. And we're waiting for those to occur. And one of them being, including that there is a tenant who is still occupying the property.
Ms. Getz?
Yes, sir.
I want to give you a chance to finish.
Would it be okay if I, can we talk together? Can we...
Because I'm one of the...
Here we go. Yes.
Okay, you asked a question about the 48 units. And what I wanted to explain to you is one of the things, if you do an EAR, then you get to discover all the alternatives. And now you're basically being asked to decide really an EAR based upon someone saying, oh, we could do 48 units. I'm going to quickly say that that's a red herring. What's going on in the city is that we actually have a glut of the type of project, of type of units that they're trying to build. What we have is a shortage of is rent-controlled affordable housing. In 2013, the city built 150% of above affordable housing. It has a 12% vacancy rate of this type of unit, which is basically, these are basic apartments, although they're legally called single-family homes. We've got a 12% vacancy rate and they're building into that. The problem that they have is that, oh, and they only built 37% of affordable housing. Well, one of the reasons they don't build affordable housing is people who pay the rents for affordable housing can't really, you know, they don't generate enough revenue. Now, the other problem is that since there's a glut of this type of housing, the one of the reasons developers are building less is they're not being able to get loans from Wall Street. And they can't get the loans because they're not being able to rent these houses or sell these houses. So it's not altruism that they're reducing these projects and they could do 48%, and they've decided, I mean, 48 units, and they've decided to go down. They've gone down to something that they think they might be able to sell. And what they do is rather than doing one big apartment house, they discover if they take a two-car garage and they put a large apartment over it and then have separate walls and they called a single-family house, then they have diced up what was otherwise would have been a large apartment complex, which they couldn't sell off. But they can now sell these off to foreign investors because they have so many different units. So they'll have 28 different units and therefore it's a marketing ploy. But in reality, what you have is the same thing as if they had built one large apartment house and if they could have sold, if they could have done 48 units, they would have done 48 units, but they've built into a glut. And so this 48 thing is a myth. So it's not a situation if you say to them, hey, go back and do an EIR so we can see the alternatives. It's not saying deny the project. We're saying just do an EIR, so all the facts.
We heard you on that. Are you done?
Yes, I am. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, sir.
Just to close, you know, the commissioners have heard and hopefully the documentation that's been submitted since 2015, I think, has started. And the substantial amount of documentation that has reached you by now, if indeed you have reviewed all few thousand pages of it, in addition to hearing from the community, from people that live there, people that live on the surrounding streets, people that live a mile away, in addition to the thousands of pages, in addition to a letter written from the community that previously worked with these developers and the fact that they could be approved and allowed to work with our community after knowing what they did, that is terrifying to me and to my community. As if the fact that you could just approve it to begin with, but the fact that after hearing the types of people that these are and the kind of business that they're going to bring in my community that I would otherwise not be exposed to, that does not exist until they come in and they completely do what they do. That's impact. That's called impact. And there's substantial impact here. Whether it's one person or a thousand, the specific plan doesn't say, or CEQA doesn't say how many people need to be impacted for there to be significant evidence, significant impact, substantial evidence all over the place. And just to clarify, the front page of the North Hollywood Valley Village Community Plan states it's not just single-family dwellings. It talks about specifically preserving existing character of residential multiple-unit dwellings. Page 11-1. It became effective affording the area protection from the adverse impacts. And the whole plan talks about multifamily dwelling, specifically where it says multifamily dwelling. So again, I appreciate you guys staying late and thank you. Sorry about going over, but there's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are closing public comment.
I have an answer, though, to...
We are closing public comment. Thank you very much. Commissioner Mather, how do you come down on this matter? Did you pass?
No, I'm not going to pass. I'm going to put in my two cents. I'm a fan of small-lot development. I was involved in the very first one, in the original ordinance, a long time ago. But given that, I also know this little neighborhood. And my instinct would be to say you are protecting them by allowing a small lot to come in. We're protecting your neighborhood. But I think it is too much, too big. The price just staggers the imagination. And it's an impact on a little tiny area that has hard entrance and egress. And I just wish that the council office and the developer had worked more with the community to solve some of these problems. I don't know if I'm going to make you happy.
That part is...
But, so that's where, if there was something I could do to stop this at this point and turn back the clock and have more interest made in it, I just think that it's moving forward too fast without the appropriate input. I, you know, I'm sitting here feeling like I really want to grant the appeal in full, period.
Commissioner B.
I mean, we've heard a lot tonight. And it does not seem to me, just based on what I've read, that there has been much community discussion, community discussion with the council office. And on the face of it, I like the idea of creating housing. I don't like the idea of vacating rent-controlled properties. And, I mean, we're talking about people's lives. And I just, I think I'm inclined to grant the appeal.
Commissioner Durkin?
You know, in my experience, environmental or CEQA documents usually trigger in when you've got a large project, like a freeway or a highway or a community plan or a general plan. For the year and a half I've been here, I haven't seen an EIR. Because we only get cases that are 52 units or less, usually. So to me, the whole CEQA argument today is just wild. I don't even know where it's coming from. It's not based in fact. So with that said, as a metro employee, this is a block and a half away from an orange line station. And I want to see people talking less about parking and cars and more about walking to the bus. And I think we need to create transit-oriented development around projects. I'd love to see the 48-unit project, but that's not in front of us. So we've got something that I think is going to fit in better with the community and I support denying the appeal.
Commissioner Kim?
I am kind of all over the place with this. While I sympathize with the residents in the community, I mean, we've had instances and cases before us where we've had a lot of the community members come out against the project. But, I mean, what's before the commission isn't really about the parking or trying to change the aesthetics or it... What comes before us and what we're able to make a decision on is, you know, very specific. And in this case, I mean, I've said this before. I mean, it's about, I mean, you can't just ignore property rights. And by right, they can build something much more massive and something that I'm sure none of you guys will like. So considering what by right they could do, I think in line with the councilman's office, I think this project will...
Commissioner, can I ask you a minute?
Of course. Commissioner Adams?
I don't know where in any of the specific plans coming out of the city of LA or Sacramento that there's a line item about social engineering. So I really object to having a philosophy about an orange line. That will happen at some point, probably in three generations, where there's very few cars in Los Angeles. But it isn't going to happen now. It's not a practical impact to this process. There are unique situations where things can be brought in, like the environmental impact report. If it slows this down and gives the community more impact, input into this project, I think that's something that we can't do much, but maybe we can allow the council office some time and the developer to consider working more closely. This is better than getting a bigger units. It is better. And it does diminish the impact that way. But I really think that it needs a better look. There's a rush to process. I agree with that.
Commissioner B, do you have anything to add?
No, I guess that in looking at the project, I also, even though there are single-family dwellings, eight inches between them? I mean, I don't know. I just, I don't like it. And I agree with the environmental impact report. I think that would at least serve everyone's purposes and give the community more knowledge about what their alternatives are.
It is, oh, man. It is rare that it falls upon the chair to break a tie.
That's what you get for calling them first.
Yeah. But I agree with what I've been referring to as the drift. And at least Commissioner Mather agrees with it, too, that this project is less density and more parking than the as-of-right alternative. And for me, that's kind of what it boils down to. And I hate to disagree with or let down my neighbors who have come out to express strong opinions about this. But for the community opposition to the project, for me, this would not have been a very close question. Because they did reduce the project. And I defer a lot to the councilman's office position on this. I defer a lot to neighborhood council. But I also defer to the other organizations that exist and have weighed in. I'm not persuaded by the answers I've got to my question. What do you prefer here? And I'm not convinced that an environmental impact report is required by this project or that it would do anything other than delay the current one. And so respectfully, and if forced to make a choice, I would agree with Commissioner Kim and Commissioner Durkin, but respectfully and with some hesitation about it. So unless there's anything to add, we'll entertain a motion.
May I ask a question of the council's report? Do you want to do that or no?
If you'd like to, of course, you know.
Would the council office have liked this to be a less impactful project?
The council office, looking at the facts of the case and looking at the findings that we have to make, didn't see an opportunity for a less impactful project. The environmental study did not have any significant impacts identified. They actually did what's called an extensive MND, which is beyond the normal MND that they do because they analyzed portions that were identified as having no impact because of their size, like traffic. They did an additional analysis just to do belts and suspenders on this beyond what they were required to do under an MND. And some of that came from our pushing because we wanted to make sure that we had all our i's dotted and all our t's crossed before we said that all the findings of this have been met and we believe that it has. If I had the ability to get rid of the State Ellis Act, I would have done so in a heartbeat. If I, there is a lot of state laws that I would try to get rid of in a heartbeat. That being said, we don't. We have what we have in front of us with the findings that we have to make and the laws that we have and mostly handed down to us from state law that we have to comply with. And unfortunately, that's what we have to do and we don't have the ability to change those or override those with actions here.
Thank you very much.
Develop the word, you donors.
It's irrelevant to that, but the answer to that is no. I don't believe either to my law side.
Commissioner Durkin and Commissioner Kim, I invite a motion.
Renee, CEA, if you want to make a motion, are you going to take it in two parts or eight? Or six and seven? Yeah.
What's the procedure? You have, you heard the items together.
You heard them together, but you can separate the motion.
One motion for each? Fair enough, okay. In the matter of, I would like to make a motion in the matter of besting track 73704 SLA1 with the company Environmental 2015 2618 MND. I move that we deny the appeal and adopt the staff findings.
Do we have a second?
And the finding on environmental?
I said the environmental case. Right?
You didn't add that into the recommended actions. You added in the denial of your, is that part three as well?
I'm not understanding. What should I say in language?
You could say, you could move to adopt staff's recommendations.
I moved to adopt staff recommendation. Was there an appeal on this or not?
Yes, they're denying, the recommendations deny the appeal apart. That clearly captures it.
Okay, so...
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please, both commissioners.
Renee, CEA, we have a vote, a motion on the floor. Commissioner Durkin, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kim, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Betty, how do you vote?
No.
And Commissioner Mathers, how do you vote?
No.
And Commissioner Cochran, how do you vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's three to, and the motion passed.
All right, in the matter of, item number seven, in the matter of Directors of 2015-2697 SPP 1A, and the accompanying environmental 2015-2618 MND, I would like to move that we deny the appeal, sustain the director's determination, and adopt a mitigated negative declaration.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please poll the commissioners.
Commissioner Durkine, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kim, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Betty, how do you vote?
No.
And Commissioner Mather, how do you vote?
No.
And Commissioner Cochran, how do you vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the motion passed, three to.
Thank you. Do we have any cards for public comment? Okay, it is now 7:51, and we are adjourned. Thank you.